Go ahead and call to order in the roll call. Are we good, Eric, as far as recording and off mute? Thank you. Carrie Farolino, don't believe she's going to be able to be here, she told us, right?
Yes.
Joe Coletti?
Joe Coletti, Hebron.
Gabe?
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Thank you, Eric.
Eric Shevchenko, Andover.
Thank you, Mary?
Mary?
Mary is not.
Yes. Pam? No Pam? Mike?
Mike Shering, Hebron.
Thank you. Kirsten?
Kirsten Robinson, Andover.
Great. Sue, I don't think she's going to be on either. Heather?
Heather Summer, Hebron.
Great, thank you, and Mike Morris from Hebron. Okay, so if we could ask everyone to stand, Pledge of Allegiance. There's a little flag right behind it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is one nation under God, in his liberty and justice for all. Which brings us to item three, public comment, you'll bear with me for a moment. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro, community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Gabe, if I could ask you to serve as our timekeeper? Thank you. And at this point, is there anyone physically present that would like to give a public comment? Seeing none, I'll go to the online presence. If you're online and you'd like to give a public comment, either raise your digital hand or make yourself known. Anybody, Eric? Nope? Okay, so then we'll move on to item four, which is any additions or deletions to agenda items. Is there anybody on the board that would like to propose an addition or a deletion from the agenda? Hearing none, that moves us on to item five, and the Board of Education Chair Report. So normally, there's no shortage of things to talk about. The one thing I'll just say is that I don't have a ton to talk about. It's, you know, the routine items are, as usual, the staff, the faculty, the everybody that works here, both at the middle school and the high school, have done a fantastic job of getting the kids back to school, was, I think, as seamless reopening of schools as I've probably seen in, you know, the, I don't know how many years since my daughter started going to school here and successful successions of sons being here. I generally gauge that, how seamless it is by whether or not one of my children is complaining, and there were no complaints. So I think by their standards, everything went pretty well, and they felt pretty comfortable coming back, and it seems like they were well-informed and organized, and they would tell me. So kudos to everybody that works here, and thank you very much for that. You know, one of the things that we have always talked about, and I had asked the superintendent just to share my comments because I couldn't participate in the opening ceremony for the school, was that, you know, the thing that's paramount is safety and security here at the school, and I would just reiterate the things that I've kind of spoken about at the beginning of last year and continue to reiterate, is that, and hopefully, you know, the staff and folks at the school, as well as parents and students, are getting this message that, you know, that's a perishable item. It's one of those things where if you're not paying attention to it, if you're not looking out for the person in front of you and behind you, and making sure that, you know, that they're adhering to the rules, like making sure the doors are closed behind you, and that you're not letting people in, doors that they shouldn't be coming into, or that doors that don't close or lock automatically when they should are repaired or reported, or you're identifying people that are in the school that don't seem like they belong there, and, you know, seeing something and saying something, all those kinds of things. It's not about trying to get who didn't participate in the rule, but looking out for each other to make sure that, you know, when, when we do laps, which we will, we're all human, and it's human error, that we pick people up and we're looking out for each other, and that we're continuing to keep that at the forefront of everything, because we really can't do anything here educationally if nobody feels safe and secure. So I think that's the one thing that I like, especially in September, to just reiterate to everybody, and I feel, I apologize for not being able to do that, beginning opening ceremonies. Other than that, a great start for the football team so far, and I know the other school, the other teams have done a pretty great job, they've had some pretty good performances so far, so good job, everybody. So that brings us to item six, which is the report of the superintendent.
So I will echo your sentiments about the smooth start to the school year. I always say that, though, with some trepidation, because it's like basically on Friday afternoon at noon, you say, boy, it's been a really quiet Friday today. I think even it would hit me if I said that in central office. So it's one of those things where it has been a, it has been a great opening. I appreciate the work of the teachers, the administration, our non-certified staff, support staff, custodial staff, in all the work that they did to make sure that we have had such a good opening. We had convocation happen, as you said, you know, we certainly understand that you weren't able to make it, but your sentiments were shared with the staff. It was a really positive, it was a really positive experience. We try to breathe as much fun and lightness to the event. I know Heather was able to be here, I'm glad you were able to be here, and she said, I think her comments to me afterwards was Ethan should be a comedian or something.
Oh, my gosh.
He's always entertaining.
He is, he is entertaining.
A stand-up routine.
Yeah. So again, convocation was just a real positive way to start the school year, and then teachers, you know, were involved in about two and a half days after convocation of professional development time, as well as work time to get started for the school year, and just again, everything's been going good. It has been a smooth start to the school year. I will say that we've had some hiccups in regards to just weather has been unpredictable. We are fortunate to have central air conditioning. Obviously, some of our surrounding districts don't have that luxury. We weren't impacted by the significant heat that did, well, I shouldn't say that, we did have to alter and change some plans for some of our athletic events, we had to limit our practice times, make sure that we had obviously an adequate amount of water breaks for students, we had to move game times for football, you know, because we just were really trying to make sure, kind of going back to what you said, safety and security is the most paramount thing, and, you know, I wanted to, as much as I realized it was a challenge for families to have to kind of navigate the changes in the schedule, I felt it was the, the changes were made in the best interest of kids, so, but, you know, we were able to get the games in eventually, maybe not as they were initially scheduled, but we've been working on making up on those things. We, I wanted to make sure, I also shared with, with the board, I think I shared this with you in a previous communication, but one of the things that the board was, obviously, and we're here now, was supporting creating this new Board of Education meeting space, and one of the things that we wanted to make sure is it wasn't just something that was utilized by the board. The board didn't want to invest the money in creating this space solely for your, for your benefit. And so last week, Dr. Shirusi sent me a great image of students from the inquiry team participating in a virtual field trip with students from Panama.
That's awesome.
And, and they were utilizing the space, and I think it was, Mr. Nunes was telling me, there was some kids that were saying, wow, that is pretty impressive, kids from other schools were impressed by the space and the equipment that we have to utilize. So it was just, it's great, so it's the first of many, I am sure of. We have, to your point, we've only been in school for a few weeks, so I don't have a lot to share, we do have open house coming up, middle school is going to be Wednesday, high school is going to be Thursday evening, we have those events at the schools, fall sports seasons have started up, and so my calendar is starting to quickly fill up with attending different events and activities. And that concludes my report.
All right. Which brings us to item seven, which is approval of the minutes. Item 7.1 is the approval of minutes from August 21st, 2023. At this point, I'll put the motion on the board, if there's any on the table, and then if there's any discussion, we'll go ahead and do that. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular August 21st Board of Education meeting. Okay, thank you, Joe. Is there a second? Thank you, Heather. Was there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, then we'll have a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and assume that nobody is going to object to the fact that we didn't have a student here at the beginning, but she was able to make it, and go ahead and get our student report, even though it may be a little bit out of order. Any of the board object to a slight aberration in the agenda? Or? Oh, that's no worries, no worries at all. So we'll blame it on, on the principal. Fine, we may, absolutely. So at this point, why don't you go ahead and?
So, so far, there's been a really great start to the school year, you know, small sports have began, so like soccer, volleyball, football, all of that jazz, seniors have began, like applying to colleges or beginning the process for applying to colleges. Homecoming is coming up very soon, and also the Hebron Fair just happened, that has been a really big event for our entire community, it really brings the students together. Also, there have been grade assemblies held by the administration, just to like give the grade, the freshmen through seniors, information about like what's going on this year. And there's been a continuation to the DEI program, so there have been like meetings where students and administration have been together to sort of talk about the various things they want to improve and things that they like about the school. And, yeah, so far, smooth start, probably, but probably the smooth start to one of the school years so far, no COVID, no drama.
Yeah, right? All right, good. The echo by the student representative, too. Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate that. Which brings us to item eight, which is the consent agenda, and item 8.1, which is a resignation letter from Erica Nipper.
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll just say, you know, we did receive a letter of resignation from Ms. Nipper, and we appreciate all the work that she's done here at Ram over the years, and wish her the best. I'll just, if I, if I can, I'll just jump ahead and say also, the other item that's a part of the consent agenda is the approval of the, an international field trip to Italy in the spring of 2025. The field trip is associated with our high school Latin program, it's my understanding that this is a trip that has been done in the past here in the district. I believe it was slated to get done during one of the COVID years and got pushed back, it just didn't quite get the chance to go off, so Ms. Banks, our Latin teacher, is excited about bringing this opportunity back. She's done some preliminary planning, there is an item, enclosure 8.2, in your board packet, which kind of gives a very high-level summary of what the agenda would be, or the, I should say, the itinerary would be, and the, the plan, the plan, the field trip plan would need to be approved by the board before she goes forward with really kind of solidifying.
Okay. So this is, what, so what is this, just a?
The consent agenda approves both of those things, the acceptance of the resignation as well as the field trip.
I guess the only question, it's, so as far as the field trip, the details of the field trip, one is that?
So the, a very, again, a rough itinerary here, she's got, once it gets approved, then she's going to work and move forward, becoming a greater level of.
And then that's, that's a revisit to the board for approval?
It's, you really know, you're just approving, approving now at this point.
I got it. Is there, is there a circumstance where she presents that updated again, even if it's not? I think it's worthwhile, since we've got the new, it's one of the first times we're going to kick it back off. Okay, so at this point, I'll put it onto the floor, and then we can have a discussion if necessary. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the items contained within the consent agenda. Don't move. Thank you, Gabe. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. All right, is there any discussion?
Chaperone?
The only thing I would say is, right, chaperone, if, just again, to get it on the record, at some point, come back and present sort of the more detailed plan of what's going to happen. That would be great. Okay, if there's no other discussion, then I'll go do a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those carry unanimously. Which brings us to item nine, which is the Student Program Spotlight, 9.1 Therapy Dog Program, which I can tell you, everybody's excited.
Yeah, so I'm super excited about this, as, as Ms. Roush knows, not only is this program great for our students, but it's one of the highlights of my day when they come down to central office. And, and so I was really excited that we could present this to the board this evening. At this time, I would like to just introduce and invite Christine Hartwig, our People's Service Director, to the podium, and she's going to introduce our presenter and program a little bit.
Hi, everybody. So just to introduce Carol, Carol joined our team in the 21-22 school year, and in 2022, Carol took the initiative and did all of the legwork, legwork to start our therapy dog program. She works with Pet Partners and the New England Human Animal Bond Foundation, who's here tonight, and, you know, the therapy dogs come into Ram on a scheduled basis, but they also have the flexibility to come in for different events, which Carol can talk about, such as high-stress time flicks testing, and even, we're here for graduation last year. So Carol's going to talk a little bit about the reasons for starting this program, and the positive impacts it's had on our students, our staff, and our school community. So please welcome Carol.
Great, thank you.
Three years ago, when I came to Ram, I wanted to bring a pet therapy program to benefit the students and the staff. We all went through social isolation when COVID was at its worst. Everyone felt the effects of COVID socially, emotionally, and physically. So I thought it would be a very positive program for Ram and its community to bring the pets in, to help with the negative effects of COVID. To this day, the pet therapy continues and thrives in our community, bringing positive feelings and moments to share with our students and staff. It increases our positive social interactions, it increases our positive feelings, and it also decreases our anxiety and our depression, as the kids tell me. We have Barnabas, who couldn't be here tonight, his owner is not well, but he started off our program in its infancy a couple of years ago, and then we kept adding on more dogs as we went along, so that we have the dogs visiting us every week. So it's a straight through, through the month, we have our visitors. Tonight, we have Opie, he's heartbroken, and we have Callie. They are from the Human Animal Bond Foundation, which is, I mean, every other week to join us, and we also have a new black shepherd called Red, and he's newly certified and will be adding to the team. So we have them circulating throughout the building, I walk with them, so it gives me a chance to get to know all the students in the school, not just a select few that I work with, so that gets me out there as a support person, which makes me very happy so that they can identify me as somebody who works in guidance, and that they could possibly approach if they need the support. And it's nice, because the other day, I went into the cafeteria, and one of the students went, I know you, and she's a ninth grader that just came in, and she's like, how do I know you? And then she goes, oh, you're the lady with the dogs, you're the school psychologist. So that made me feel good, that I'm not somebody who's tucked away in guidance maybe, but that they actually know who I am, and, and they, they feel, you know, that, the connection with me. So that gives me a positive to this program. I have the presentation that we can watch with the slides, that is Barnabas, who couldn't be here tonight, he was our initial dog, and he brings great joy to us, and he is a love. And then we have the new members, Callie, who's here tonight, and Opie, Reyna is also there, pictured, and that is Red at the end, who is our new member, who will start pretty soon.
Now, was that, was that Barnabas's graduation cap, or did?
No, Barnabas has several, just in case.
Okay.
But he was perfect, nothing fell off, and he stood at attention, and said goodbye to each and every student, and the students have very positive things to say, thanking him for being there, and even at that night, when they're kind of anxious to walk across the stage, he was still giving support, so it was very positive, and a nice send-off for each and every student. The therapy dogs provide additional emotional support when needed, they provide support for students during testing, PSATs, SAT testing, midterms and finals, we provide extra support so they come in more often. We walk around during the beginning of testing, and then at the finish of the first set of tests, and then at the end, so everybody has time to de-stress from what they went through. They attend graduation ceremonies, as I just stated, and they also provide support in case of loss and tragedy that were to happen, and they also are a vehicle to building social skill. I have many students that I work with, and then I have the other students who are also walking around the halls, and they meet up with each other, and they interact, that maybe they would never interact, you know, on any other circumstance, but the dogs bring them together, very authentic, it's very genuine, and, you know, good relationships are started because they have this interaction with the dogs. About a year or so ago, WBIT Channel 30 called me up at 11:30 in the morning and said, we would like to do a story on Ram, and we're going to interview at 1:30 in the afternoon. So there wasn't much preparation, and it was kind of during our COVID times, so it was virtual, but we're going to just show the clip of a nice segment that just really portrays Ram as a school who's, you know, building nice relationships because of the pet therapy program.
If you're an animal lover, you probably know that a friendly paw or a kiss from a west snout can go a long way, and now it's really benefiting some local students. That's thanks to Barnabas here. He's one of the few therapy dogs that have been making the rounds at Ram Middle School and High School in Hebron. The golden retriever and his owner are from East Hampton, and they've been visiting the schools every month this year. He's also providing animal-assisted therapy. Not only is his big grin putting smiles on the faces of kids, but also provide.
They just light up, they are excited, they change instantly when they see the dog. It's like, he's our rock star. They can't even get through the building without, you know, being stopped, and, and just, you know, the Barnabas is just loved, absolutely loved.
School psychologist Carol Rush got the schools approved to take part in the National Dogs in the Classroom Program through Pet Partners. The pilot program is only in about 100 markets, it helps students experience the benefits of the human-animal bond. Rush says, based on a survey she conducted with the students, these dog visits have been really beneficial.
Before the therapy dogs started, there was a high level of anxiety, depression, negative feelings, anger, frustration, and it was a complete turnaround. All the anxiety and the depression after the visits reduced like 40, 50%.
She says students are experiencing extra stress brought on by news about gun violence, events in Ukraine, and the ongoing pandemic. But Rush says that through the Dogs in the Classroom Program, she's able to engage with kids more often as she's bringing the pups around for visits.
I walk around with the dog and their owner, and I, you know, engage with the kids so that that's helpful for me to kind of just have that contact with kids that I don't normally have contact with, and I listen to what they have to say and their reactions.
And another pup named Tegan also just joined the program, along with a few other dogs that live in the area. This will allow schools to have dog visitors on a weekly basis.
So we did have excellent press coverage between that and WTNH in New Haven covered us, several articles in local newspapers, and a national story in a magazine through Pet Partners in California also covered us as well. So we were one of 100 student, schools that participated in this program that started, so Ram was on the map. And I'll also mention, I have it later on, but the CEA also contacted me and was very interested in what we did and how we did it so that they could start instituting this in schools across the state as well. So several students did some articles throughout the year in the ramble about the program as being a positive impact at Ram. And this is data from last year, but when told, the students really gave us positive feedback that they wanted the program to continue and felt it was very beneficial at Ram, so that's why we continue to do this. And they wanted it to continue, so, and increase, and that's what we did, so we went from every other week to weekly. And this is some data that I had from before, and it correlates with high levels of anxiety, depression, negative feelings, and after the dogs visited, it was reversed, so they had high levels of positive feelings, less stress, and less anxiety. So that is what we were aiming to do, and we saw that it correlated very well.
Does that say 196 responses?
Yes. Yeah, it was a very good response from the kid. I was very happy, so it was a nice example. Some of the feedback from before was all positive. You're my antidepressant, I am instantly happy when I see him, me and Barnabas, I needed this, I feel my depression lifting, I always feel better after seeing him, he gives me something else to occupy my mind and not be so focused on things that get me anxious. So those were some of the statements that were made last year.
Is that last one from the staff?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was.
Interesting, we think about the kids, we don't necessarily think about the staff.
Exactly, and, and that's why it included current feedback from the staff and the students. So some teacher feedback. I love the therapy dogs, anytime I have seen them walking in my class, I love to have them come in and say hello, it's wonderful to see the kids' faces light up, I've seen the dogs bring a smile to the faces of even the most reserved kids, reading the dogs bring a boost of positive energy that I think we all benefit from. Callie is here tonight. I cannot tell you how much the visit with Barnabas changed the course of the day for one of my students, she came in shortly before you arrived and was on the verge of tears. She did not want to talk about what was bothering her. After your visit, her mood improved, and she worked diligently on her work, meeting her goal for the week. Thank you for the work that you do with the therapy dogs, that was from Mrs. Pizzito. It's a great program, it brings a little bit of fun back to school, especially after COVID, is an inclusive program, it benefits everyone who doesn't like dogs. It's a great program, it is a definite mood booster, it also has a calming effect on our students, who doesn't love a dog? And that's from Jessie, Mrs. Care, at you here. Thank you so much for implementing the pet therapy dog visits at Ram. My special needs students especially look forward to seeing and petting the certified therapy dogs during their weekly visits to Ram. In fact, one of my students would ask me to put my calendar, put on my calendar, the dates and times of when the dogs were going to be in school, so she would not miss them. And lastly, I have observed the positive impact Barnabas and the other therapy dogs have on our students, the calming effects of these dogs is priceless, it is heartwarming to see the joy on the faces of our Ram community when the dogs arrive in the atrium of the school during lunch waves, even the Ram staff have taken a moment to de-stress with the dogs. And that's from Pat Mercy, also a parent. So, as Ethan said, it's inclusive, everybody benefits from the visits. Student feedback, I'm going to ask. No, thank, Mitt Fisher and Rosalie.
All right. Can you repeat your name?
I'm Mitt. So I really, really like the therapy dog program, they, they come by at lunchtime, just when I usually see them, and kind of no matter what's happening in the day, I always go and just to say hi to them, sometimes more than once, and like, even when I'm not up there with them, just like watching other people, be with them, interact with them, is just really nice to see.
Never again?
My name's Rosalie Kelly, just like Mitt said, I love seeing the dogs anytime that I go up to see them in lunch or in the hallway, I love watching how everybody, as soon as they. I love watching how everybody, as soon as they see the dogs, instantly like runs up to the atrium to say hi to them. And it's not just in the high school. Last year, I was, at the end of last school year, I was able to walk down to the middle school to dogs, and all the students there had the same reaction. They all ran up to them, spent time petting them. It seems to just make everyone's day better, no matter what I have. If I'm like overdue on working classes or have a big test coming up, the dogs always make me feel better and help calm me down, no matter what's going on in my classes.
Some other feedback from students is, I just love the dogs. Knowing that the dogs are at the high school makes me less anxious to go to the high school. They make me so happy, and they are the best part of the school. And they are wonderful, and they make me feel supported, which is very big in my book. And some other things are, they have a positive impact on the resilience and reach programs that are located here in the school. They have been said to motivate the students to come to school when they know that the dogs are visiting. So sometimes when they don't, they have so much anxiety, they don't want to come to school. This kind of motivates them to, to come and see the dogs. They are a positive distraction from feelings of anxiety. They help students regulate their emotions so they can continue their academic day having a more positive mindset and a way to help students build social skills. That is wonderful, graduation. And what I look forward to doing in the near future this year is expanding the program so that I have more of a peer mentorship along with the dogs. I have my select, a few students who I work with, the SOAR group that I work with at AHM, and also some students who are willing to work with me during the school day and have some free periods between lunch or study skills. Will be going down to either the middle school and or working with me with certain groups that I work with so that we have more of a peer relationship between some students that usually don't interact. And I build some social skills with some of the students that I've worked with using my role models. So that is our pet therapy program that I wanted to introduce, Michelle. She is the founder of the Bond Foundation, and she is also the head trainer.
Any questions or comments? Thank you for the view.
I'm a little curious, I mean, the dogs are just so well behaved, I'm embarrassed about my dog right now. How did you get into this?
Craig and I have been training our own dogs for many years. We do a lot of bovie's training with our dogs. When we got bovie and this sister Rena, we knew we had to do therapy with them. So we were taking a horse all the way to Rhode Island to get our certification and decided it was something missing from our local community. So because of our dogs, we started the movement for the Animal Art Foundation, where we train and certify more teams. So a lot of the teams that are coming here, we teach a weekly class to their friends. We do that over assisted living right here. So we get to train in facility. That's how you get really solid dogs, they're training through every scenario.
And these are teams that are going out to other school systems?
Yes, hospitals, nursing homes, we do a lot with veterans.
There you go. So one thing I was gonna say is, I definitely have to get you some Dog Ram swag, you know, jerseys or something, I don't know, I gotta do something. And then, what, could I ask you to come up with the dogs and the students and the board if we could take a picture with the therapy dogs? This is the funnest part of being here, man, this is the best part of being on the board. And also, if we could schedule them for, to visit the board during the budgeting process. We just read the middle bit. Thank you for everybody that came to participate in this book. Really appreciate you guys making the time to be here, and students as well. Thank you so much for taking the time to be here. I know you got other student stuff to be doing right now. What's that? Better be, is that you said better be? Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, which brings us to, yeah, brings us to item 10, which is old business, and the 10.1, the strategic plan update.
Yeah, I just felt it would be pertinent to just give the board a very, very brief synopsis of where we are. As, as everybody knows, we started the strategic planning process last year. We did, we did focus groups, we did surveys to gather as much data as we possibly could. And we're to the point now where we're going to get together as a strategic planning committee, which is going to be comprised of students, staff, board members, Heather and Eric. I appreciate your willingness to be a part of the process. We have elected officials from a couple of the towns, administration. So again, a broad representation of, of people across the district to, you know, data that was gathered, synthesize it, and ultimately land on developing a strategic plan. So we have four meetings scheduled for beginning shortly in the next couple of weeks. We really wanted to give people a time to settle down through the month of September. So we're gonna start in October and have four consecutive weeks of meetings from, I think it's four o'clock in the afternoon to eight o'clock in the evening. And, and then the input is going to be gathered from those different stakeholders, looking at the data that was gathered. And again, we're gonna go through the process in East Hampton facilitating the development of a strategic plan. Ultimately, what I see happening is the finalized plan coming back to the board when it is ready for, for you all to have a chance to look at, review, and discuss. And that strategic label health guidance over the next several years. So I just felt it was a good idea to give the board an update on where we are. And, and I'm really happy with, with the direction we're going in and looking forward to getting through the process.
Any questions for the superintendent on the strategic plan? Okay, which brings us to item 11, which is new business, 11.1, reading of policies. I believe these are all first reads, is that right?
Correct.
So that brings us to 5310, which is the immunization policy.
So I'll try to do a good job of providing a context for where we currently are with this policy and where I hope to go with it. I explained this to the board, the policy subcommittee, when we met last week or the week, last week, I think it was. Thank you. So currently, our immunization policy is, is really twofold. We have the policy, which is 5310 for immunization requirements. And if you go on the redline version, a couple of pages in, on page five, you could see the administrative regulations pertaining to health screenings, health assessments and screenings, right? So we're talking really about two very different things. We're talking about policy related to immunizations, and then separately, within that policy, it gets into health screenings and assessments. And the recommendation that I had for the subcommittee and I have for the entire board is to really parse those two things out and have there be a separate policy on immunizations, which we would update to be aligned with current legislation. And then, and then take out the language about health screenings and assessments and make that its own policy, which you'll see is the second policy on our agenda for, for discussion this evening. So I'll start with the immunization requirement. So there, this policy has not been updated for, for several years since April 2014. And there was some pretty substantive changes that took place since the last time it was revised. There was a small window of time where the state of Connecticut allowed for religious exemptions to some of the immunization requirements, and then those, those exemptions actually went away. So there, so the, the policy language now that you have in front of you, the redline version, speaks to the fact that those immuniz-, I'm sorry, the exemptions existed for a period of time because those exemptions are still in place for people who were granted those exemptions. They're essentially grandfathered into being allowed to have those exemptions. But it also sunsets that during that period of time, only those exemptions were in place. And so the changes that are on the, on the policy specific to the immunization requirements would, again, align where we currently need to be with regards to the legislative changes that have taken place, which actually, again, there's been a few iterations of legislative changes related to immunizations. Again, what you'll see, and I'm just gonna kind of do this in totality because they're related. You'll see that what I did was, we, we X'd off the entire administrative regulations pertaining to health assessments and screenings. And if you continue to look, you'll see the next policy is 5315. It would be a new policy that currently doesn't exist. But the redline version, what I did was, I, I took the regulations that existed under the old immunization policy, and I used that as to, to mock up the redline version, if that makes sense. So the changes that you see in the redline version of this new policy, typically when I come with a brand new policy, it's, it's clean, there's no markups, there's no redline version. The reason that a redline version exists for this particular policy is because I took the regulation because I want the board members to see how we're not only updating the immunization policy, but we're also making sure that the health screenings and assessments are aligned with what the current legislation is as well. And you could see there's quite, quite a few changes in there. I could do my best to try to answer any questions, or certainly Eric and Heather, who are part of the policy subcommittee, can, can try to help me with that as well. I could entertain any questions that people might have about either one of these policies.
So I did go through both of the policies together, the original version, and then go through the separated versions. And I saw some of the changes, and most of them looked like they were driven by the state requirements.
Correct.
Outside of the state requirements, anything that I, that I'm not seeing, was there any dramatic changes?
No.
From the policy subcommittee, any?
No.
With a number of these policies, requirements change from the state over a period of time. And we're not always Johnny on the spot and squaring those up. So we've got kind of an ongoing effort here to, to clean up a lot of these.
Yeah, totally get it. And like I said, I didn't see anything that was not aligned from one going to the other, other than things that were state updates. So if that's, then I don't have any questions. Anybody else? Nope, okay. All right, so that's a first read for basically those two. Yeah, so let's talk about the third.
Sure, so, so the third one is policy 5555, physical activity and student discipline. Again, this is a policy that has not been updated for, for several years. In fact, since it was first adopted back in 2014. And again, these are policies, these are changes being, being driven by legislative changes as well. I, I will say that the existence of this policy, I think, is driven and grounded, is grounded in more in the elementary school setting. We don't have recess in middle school, and we don't have recess in high school. But I will say that the reason that this policy came, it became a mandatory policy for school is because I think that there was opposition and to the idea of schools or teachers or schools taking away an elementary student's ability to participate in recess as a form of discipline. However, even though we don't have recess here, there are opportunities for students to engage in physical activity. And so therefore, it is still an applicable policy for us. For example, I, I, and I talked about this, I think, with the policy subcommittee the other week. We had a situation at the middle school where we had the team building day for seventh grade, which was a lot of game playing activities, teamwork, team building. But the kids got up, went outside, and spent a great portion of time outside to participate in those activities. This policy would prohibit us from being in a situation, not that I would ever condone it, but it would prohibit us from ever being in a situation where we said, oh, hey, Mike, you didn't do your homework, therefore you can't go outside and participate in that team building day. You need to stay inside and get your homework done instead. We can't utilize the taking away an opportunity to engage in physical activity as, as a means to be competitive. And so again, even though there aren't a lot of those activities here in the secondary school setting, they still do exist from time to time, so changes have been updated.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I'll just say one more thing, and for anyone who's unaware, if you look at these changes, they're quite technical in nature. And you might say, well, where the heck did we get that language? And for those unaware, there's an outfit coach at Goodwin's, the attorneys that we hire that specialize in this area. And they will review policies and, and present suggested language that is up to us to review, see whether it applies to us, and take action to improve. Is that okay?
Yes. Okay, if there are any other questions on 11.1C?
Curious that, and this is, you know, I would admit that I don't thoroughly understand this, but if this ed is, is a class that you're getting upgraded, then you prevent the child from participating as a form of discipline. Doesn't necessarily sound great to me. I mean, would you do that in science class or in math class?
No, I, I think, I think the only time, and the only time where you would find a student being prohibited from being able to participate in physical activity is if they were engaging in behavior that was being disruptive in the learning environment. And maybe there was an intervention that was put in place and, hey, listen, you know, again, and this could happen in science, or it could happen, you want it to happen as frequently as possible.
Right.
But, but you, if a student is engaging in dangerous behavior where they're not being safe, if they're engaging in disruptive behavior where they are impacting the ability for other students to engage. So thi- this isn't really about phys ed class, it's more about unstructured opportunities, or I should say out of class time, which is why I said it's really grounded in, in elementary school recess. That's, that's where this is, like, there's a whole section in here that speaks in there in Shipman and Goodwin's model policy language that speaks to recess. And we just took that out completely because it's just not applicable to us. But the, as far as phys ed goes, again, if you have a student who is, again, they're, they're doing something and a kid's being dangerous or exhibit dangerous behavior, if it was science class, you say, hey, listen, you keep, you're gonna have to just kind of take a timeout for a second, I'm gonna have to come and talk to you, with the idea of getting the student to be able to reengage, it would be no different from an academic classroom.
All right, there's no other questions, then we move on. Which takes us to 11.2 and the financials.
And 11.2A, you'll have the financials for month ending August 31st. The net favorable position that I am projecting is about $123,869. This is about $80,000 left that we were at this point last year. Also, we're currently in the process of incoming, so staff that have put budget requests in place are currently purchasing items that they need for this full year. Capital improvement funds for the most part. The retention pond, we're just awaiting established vegetation growth to happen. They're signed the bid, so we're just waiting for it to be substantial so that we can finalize that project. The middle school, which up location, which is where the high school classes are actually happening. We're awaiting the item to be delivered on or about in December. We're awaiting the item to be delivered on or about in December. The high school room three twenty-five HVAC reconfiguration is actually scheduled for winter break. The exit signs are back ordered with no anticipated delivery ever yet. The crack ceiling and light paving painting should be done by month end. The central office replacement AC unit is just currently awaiting the legal review of the bid document. The middle school gym bleachers is scheduled to be finalized by the end of September. And the facility assessment is under review or we're reviewing options with the facilities subcommittee currently. For capital non-recurring, for the most part, the irrigation well and shot clocks are completed. And the only thing that is not completed yet is the material containment that we had budgeted for to hold the topsoil, the gravel and other items for the field that we're going to place over by the maintenance shop. Unfortunately, it needs to put any zoning and fourteen items that we need to complete in order to get that process and hopefully that. People services is also encumbering for tuition and services, both for students that we are aware of and for ones that seem to be popping up that we were unaware of at this moment. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Did you say fourteen items for the material containment thing? The zoning? Okay. I just can't imagine fourteen things that would be that applicable, but okay, got it. Any other questions? Okay.
All right. So eleven point two B is the food service monthly sale. We only serve two days in August. But we still have expenditures. So at the moment, we're realizing a lot of twenty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-three thousand program. We still have a thousand to fund down last year that we rolled forward. We just needed, we couldn't claim anything for those two days yet because the state of Connecticut actually just finished reviewing your application that we did today. So we can put in the claims for the two days in August and September, and then I will put those in when I know the dollar amounts for next month's funding. Are there any questions that we have?
I'm sorry, I'm going to, can you just ask you one quick question? In fact, going back to eleven point two A. The year, the year-over-year comparison, the eighty thousand dollar difference, is that just because we did a little better targeting over the budget?
Targeting on the budget and also.
All right. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Eleven point two A, the, or two C, I think I have to come away. Student activity, it balances with the bank account for July and August. Are there any questions that the board might have on any of these? So hearing none, eleven two, eleven point two D is the short-term investment fund. So for the month of August, we reinvested our dividends of one thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars and two cents. As you can see by the historic daily rates, we started the month at five point three-two percent and ended the month at five point three-five percent of the daily rates, which is very good. Are there any questions that the board might have on this?
What's the running total now?
So.
Brings us to eleven point three. Which is the furniture donation in Pratt and Wick.
Yes. So I'll just speak to this briefly. I don't quite recall how it came up even in conversation.
You called me while I was in a space that had all this.
In the hang, something.
Oh, yeah.
And we were just, so I was having a conversation with Heather one day and talking about, I think I was talking about my, the chairs in my office, which when I came into district last year, I found to be ungodly, uncomfortable. And I, again, I have no idea how this came up in conversation, but Heather started talking to me about how Pratt has tremendous amounts of furniture that historically they've donated to Starford Public Schools and other local boards of education. And anytime I hear about an opportunity to, to acquire some free high-quality furniture for our district, I said, well, let's forego my chairs for a bit and let's talk about what else am I having? So Eva, Heather was able to arrange and get us connected with a person who oversees this. Eva and I took a field trip this summer. It was quite an enjoyable field trip and we wandered Pratt, the campus for probably an hour and a half. And at one point I started to FaceTime Eric because I, it was like Christmas morning. I'm like, we could use this and we could use this and oh my gosh. And so item eleven points or enclosure eleven point three gives a rundown of the items that ultimately we had identified and not only did we identify that, but then we weren't allowed to pick them up because of our, because of Pratt's insurance. So it got delivered. And we, I, I, I'm, I'm going to use a rough number, so don't hold me to this, but I remember Eric had been interested in getting some new tables for the high school library. And I think the number was somewhere around forty or fifty thousand dollars for the furniture that we were just initially looking at. And the donation from Pratt includes forty oval tables, which are now taking the place of the tables that were there. And we now don't need to spend that forty or fifty thousand dollars on the library tables and chairs that we had been looking at. And so a number of things, we got desk chairs for teachers to be available. We are now hoping to go back and have another field trip because there's more to be had there. And I think there's some flooding issues that sounds like were taking place.
Yeah, do a little investigation.
But it just, I mean, it just was an incredibly generous thing. The people at Pratt were incredibly accommodating and like literally we were just walking around for an hour and a half and they're, and we were like, we have that? Yes, we have that. Yes, we have that. And we got a lot. And I, I do think, I appreciate Heather putting together the used price estimate, and I will say that that's definitely an estimate. Because I mean, we, we got a lot of really good stuff. I mean, if we didn't, it wasn't.
Am I right in that Ethan is modeling the semi-circle bench with back?
The nineteen seventies.
Thank you. Thank you.
So anyways, it was great and we're hoping to have an opportunity to go back. And I just appreciate the opportunity to help out.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Pratt.
Thank you, Heather, very much.
You call it mid-century century modern these days. That's like the ultimate.
Yeah. All right. So that's awesome. Thank you very much, everybody. Heather, thank you. And Pratt, thank you. Which brings us to item twelve, the committee reports, facility safety and transportation. Mike?
Yes. So we met September fifth and the topic of conversation at that time was votes for the reassessment on maintenance activities, needs for the facility, for the structure, for the grounds. It includes aging essentially of all of the systems and services, windows, doors, seals, HVAC, things of that nature. Company by the name of Gordian came in. They provided us a quote of about fifty thousand dollars. That quote was new, let's say forty percent greater than what we had budgeted to cover that cost. So through our discussion in the facilities subcommittee meeting, we decided that we'd like to ask Michael Schleyhoff or Eva to, to reach out to their peers in the industry, talk to other districts, follow up and find out, has anyone worked with Gordian before? Give us perhaps some feedback on that work that they've done. How successful was it? Do they have any real life experience with regard to estimates that were provided versus actual costs and timelines for when that work would be done? So we really want to make sure that what we're going to spend those dollars on is going to result in a list that is really actionable in the timelines that we need to be. We're planning on discussing some of the follow-up information gathered on some of those inquiries that'll be being made at our next subcommittee meeting.
That's, that's impressive. I'll study. All right. Thank you. Any questions for facilities? All right. Brings us to finance, audit and compliance insurance. I know Mary's not with us, but Eric or Heather, anything to add to that?
We continue to enjoy the budget off season. Catching up on our rest. And candidly looking forward to the new budget season.
Okay.
On December, June.
All right. I can see it in your eyes how much you're looking forward to it.
Nothing to add.
Okay. Great. Negotiations. Susan's not here. Do you have anything?
No, we, we don't have any negotiations ongoing. I would anticipate that we will start with unanswered by groups sometime around.
Okay. Policy, Carrie is not with us, but Gabe or Eric, anything to add for policy?
We, we had a good, we've had a number, actually, of good policies of committee meetings. The policies as, as Colin is presenting, it's the right presentation for this group. We go into a lot more detail in our meetings and are comfortable with the changes prior to them coming to, or even the first reading. The toughy for us was the, was the, the other. Dress policy. I was going to say clothes. Yeah, student dress policy was the toughy and we managed to get through that. And a number of these other policies that are coming up will be modifications due to directives from the state.
Well, glad that, now that you guys have that priority listed and knocking those out. So there's a lot of them that, like to your point earlier, some of these hadn't been updated since the mid-teens, two thousands. Okay, Gabe, anything to add?
Not much.
No? Program, Mary is not here. Mike or Heather? No meetings on that. Okay. And then as far as facilitators. So Easton actually ended up having some flooding issues in the Wyndham area. It's one of their facilities recently. Beyond that, they're continuing to do what they, they have been doing for the last year, which is sort of repairing sort of their financial position, which is, they've done a fantastic job of doing that. And at the same time, continuing to provide services and continuing to increase and improve services. So in general, I, I think, again, I came in at the point where they were sort of on the uphill on putting things back together. But I understand that they've come a long way and seems like everything's going pretty well. The only other thing I would just say is that every single time it seems like I come to the school, I find another Easton person poking around here. It just continues to amaze me what those folks do that I almost think nobody knows about really, because they don't wear Easton shirts and some of them drive Easton vehicles, but that's about it. So anyway, they do provide some pretty significant services and it's interesting to hear more about what they do. They're even driving the train for our strategic plan update. As far as Cape, I am not hearing Carrie. Carrie, I don't think is available today, but anything that you're aware of?
I mean, the only thing I'd say is we, we did put the call out for people who are interested in going to the Caves Caps Conference. It's the Friday and Saturday before Thanksgiving is generally when I tell them, I have the dates in front of me. Early registration has lapsed, but it's, there's still an opportunity if people have an interest in going. Just, I can have Jessica put out another communication. It's still available if people are interested.
Yep.
And it's, it's, it's a worthwhile, it's a worthwhile.
It's a nice one too. And we're budgeted for that. We budget a certain amount of professional development dollars for the board to do that, given that this isn't our primary occupations in the world. All right. Which brings us to item thirteen, which is public comment. Again, if you'll just bear with me. Hebron Andover and Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance. The Board of Education Public Meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act, discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Is there anyone here present that would like to present public comment? Go ahead, Ethan. We were just commenting about how we missed your monologue for, for convocation.
Yeah. I just wanted to say thanks to the work, the work you did over the summer. Really to thank you for all the work you've been doing this year. We really appreciate it. School years off, teacher, excited to be back. Third week is kind of where we can start to settle down. Getting into work now in classrooms and showing a great start to the year. Convocation was fun, a lot of fun, light-hearted, a good way to kick off the year. We'd like to thank the building administrators for talking to the students early on in the year, and the high school. The principals and assistants, principals, we have each class separately and just kind of talk about expectations on behavior. Welcoming the rest of the high school, the subcommittee teachers really appreciated and we continue moving forward. So I just want to say welcome back. I'm happy to teachers. Thanks for the work that we're going to be doing. Actually, I have one more question. Science department's a desperate chairs. We were able to get a stable, the science department is the only department that's not having a conference room. And so we asked, actually, how are conference stable last year? We got one, the only small slight oversight and ended up having chairs. So, you know.
I feel like we need a new subcommittee.
We can, we can track some chairs.
We need a new subcommittee. Free furniture, subcommittee chair would be Heather Summer.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's great. Okay. Anybody online that would like to present public comment? Make yourself known or raise your digital hand. Anything? Nope. Great. Thank you. All right. Which brings us to item fourteen, which is informational items, the calendar of events.
So just that there's, you know, a whole host of things I mentioned earlier on. We have middle school open houses coming up on Wednesday. High school is Thursday. Certainly encourage all families to, to, to attend and get to know their, their child's teachers and, and follow their schedule. I remember those days when my kids were in school and I always found it to be really beneficial for, for myself to, to just know a little bit about what the day in the life of my, my kid was when they were in school. The other thing that I will just point out, and it's on the middle school calendar for October, about October nineteenth is going to be our Drama United Show. And if you've never been to our Drama United Show, I would highly encourage you to do it. It's just, it is a, it is fantastic. The board heard me talk last year about how great our unified sports program is. And this is equally impressive and it's just great to see our kids working together and performing. So that's coming up in October.
You know, that's what I mean, the math team schedule. Yeah, if you would, I'd appreciate that. Okay. Any questions or comments for the informational items? All right. That moves us to item fifteen, which is the executive session to discuss the bus contract, contract negotiation strategy, as well as the superintendence evaluation. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the bus contract and contract negotiation strategy, as well as the superintendent's evaluation. I further move to invite Colin McAmara and Eva Galp into the executive session. So I have. Thank you very much, Joe. Is there a second? Gabe, thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none, a lot of a voice vote, all in favor? Any opposed? None. Hearing that, we are unanimously moving into executive session as of seven thirty-nine. Thank you, everyone.